Hello? Shh. Awesome. Testing, testing, test, testing, test, test, one, two, test, test.
Technical difficulties, but we're back online. Here we go. Call to order, the 17th regular meeting of the Lynn City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Council Barton.
Present.
Present Council Cahill.
Present.
Present Council Capano.
Present.
Present Council Chakoudas.
Present.
Present Council Calucci.
Present.
Present Council Sear.
Present.
Present Council LaPia.
Present.
Present Council Lozey.
Present.
Present Council Annette.
Present.
Present Council Trahan.
Present.
Present Council Walsh.
Present.
Present 11 present.
Can we all rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. President, a special prayer for Lorraine Bingham, the Bingham family, and also the Byrd family, Denise Byrd.
And also the Boyd family, please. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We take a motion to accept the minutes.
Yes, sir.
From October 11th. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Communications.
We have a communication from Morana, the mayor. Dear councils, I'm hereby reappointing the following individuals to the Lynn Cultural Council. Enzo Sorin, 179 Chatham Street, and David Simmons, 19 Sachem Street. Their appointments are effective immediately and shall expire December 31st, 2019.
Want to wish the council?
Move forward.
Motion to accept. Any applicants or appointees in the audience tonight that like to say anything, they are not here. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
The council appointment for the Traffic Commission.
Okay. Councilor Sear.
I'd like to nominate Michael Fana for that position.
Motion has been made to nominate Michael Fana and second it. Is there any discussion? I believe Mr. Fana is in the audience today. Mr. Fana would like to come forward and introduce himself to the council.
Thank you very much. I'm John Michael Fana. I live at 32 Merrill Ave. I would just first like to thank Councilor Sear for your support and the rest of the council for your consideration. I am very eager to help the city and do my part, do a little bit for the people around me and my neighbors, and I'm glad you guys could do this today for me.
Thank you, Mr. Fana. Okay, a motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Sear.
Yes.
Yes. Council LaPia.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. 11 yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Fana. Good luck. Remember to always take the council's calls. Thank you. All right. Public hearings.
Petition, abrasal, auto body and repair, Louis Flores, for permission to add an auto body shop to an existing auto repair and flammable license at 37 Bennett Street. Hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. If you'd like to speak in favor, sir, you can come right to the podium, or if you'd just like to raise your hand, that's fine, too. Okay. Are you the petitioner? You might want to come up and introduce yourselves to the council. If you could state your name and your address for the record.
Yes. My name is Louis Flores, and the one asking for the special permit for the Bennett Street, 37, so I try open the body shop over there. He's already repaired shop, hello, in the property. For my main business is body shop. That is the reason I apply for the special permit.
Thank you. You might want to take a seat in the front here, just in case there's any councilor questions. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Councilor Capano.
Yes, I've been down on the property, spoke to the owner, and I think it's a good building for something like this. It's big, open space with plenty of room for cars. I just would like to make a motion to approve, you know, but I would like to make sure that the, you know, the proper spray booth and all this, everything required by the building department is adhered to.
And the fire department.
And stipulate that also there be no cars on the street at all, no cars.
No cars on the street?
Yep.
And ISD and fire department code and regulations are met.
And I'll second that motion with the stipulations.
Motion has been made and seconded with stipulation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Sear.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. 11 yes.
Okay, next one.
Petition to National Grid, Chris Radzik, for permission to install approximately 100 feet of 2-4 inch concrete encased conduits from existing electric manhole, M-H3, to the property of 23 Central Ave to service a newly renovated multi-residential building.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Jankowski. My address is 170 Medford Street in Malden, Mass. I'm representing National Grid. The petition that you have in front of you, we're providing electric service to a renovated building, 23 Central Ave. It's going to be a renovated multi-residential building. To do that, we have to install approximately 100 feet of PVC conduit from an existing manhole in the street to the property line. This petition may not be quite as clear, but the Central Ave will not be disturbed. We're going to go straight onto the sidewalk. So if you have any questions or concerns, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in...
Concrete, not asphalt.
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Sear.
Yes.
Yes. Council LaPia.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. 11 yes.
Thank you.
We have one public hearing to be set down. Petition at 395 Linway LLC, Ralph Sevigny for permission for a laundromat at 391 Linway. Don't even get me going. Who wants to set it down?
Council Capano, were you aware of this prior to tonight's meeting?
No.
All right, so we didn't make you aware of that. My guess is this was probably a late addition on Friday after the packets have already been...
Actually, today.
Oh, today?
Before 4:00, though.
Surprise. What would you like to do with that, Mr. Capano?
I mean, let's get it over with. I, you know, we'll discuss it, you know, along the way.
We'll put it down...
In the future, I'd like to know about these things before they come up at the last minute like this.
Okay, so would you, would you like to table it, or would you like to put it down now and then we'll take it up?
Put it down. I mean, we'll, no sense.
Okay. All right, I'll take that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to put down for a public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Unfinished business, I believe. Council Capano has a couple of things.
Council Capano.
I'd like to take off the table matter of demolition of 17 South Street Court.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The matter is taken off the table. Council Capano.
I'd like to make a motion to demolish 17 South Street Court.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Council LaPia.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. 11 yes. Committee reports, ways and means. I believe there's an emergency on all these orders. If you want me to read them together, or you want to separate them?
Unless there's an objection, we'd have Madam Clerk read them all together.
All together.
All together. Council Annette agrees all together.
Order that the city solicitors office prepare all necessary documents to effectuate an eminent domain taking of the private way known as Kelly Lane. Order that the city comptroller take the following action appropriate from two revolving funds, the sum of $587,360.00, to fund fiscal year 17 retro along with adjusted rate adjustments per raises provided to all settled in to be settled labor negotiations. Certify as an available fund the amount of $100,000.00 as allotted to the City of Lynn Office of Economic and Community Development by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission to be used by the city as a result of the City of Lynn being designated as a host community to the Everett Casino. Certify as an available fund the amount of $80,000.00 as allotted to the City Lynn Office of Economic and Community Development by the Mass Development to be used for matching funds for upgrades to the auditorium. Transfer the sum of $447.38 from the fire expense to the unpaid bills of prior year. Certify as an available fund the amount of $251,386.00 as allotted to the City Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the fiscal year 17 Perkins Grant.
Well, Councilor Net, what do you think about that?
Mr. President, our unanimously order of the committee to approve and make a motion to accept.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Council LaPia.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. 11 yes.
And Councilor Net, was there an emergency on that?
There was emergency on that.
Second, an emergency made for an emergency and seconded. Any discussion on the emergency? Roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Council LaPia.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. 11 yes. Licensing.
Chairman Walsh.
Thank you. Unanimous vote of committee, motion to approve.
Second. Made to approve and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
And in public property, I believe there was one motion to approve the creation of a local historic district solely around the footprint of the G.A.R. building.
Councilor Net.
That was correct. The committee voted to allow the creation of the historic district solely around the footprint of the G.A.R. building, like Madam Clerk mentioned.
Motion is made and seconded. Question of order, is there a process upon which the city goes about doing this? Attorney Lamanna? Is this a zoning issue, or is this, what is this thing?
There is a process. I do not know what that process is, but we'll certainly look into that.
So this is the start of the process?
This is the start of the process, and what follows, we'll certainly advise you along the way.
Motion to start the process. Motion has been made and seconded. Do you accept? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. New business. Councilor Walsh.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to set down a public hearing to amend the City of Lynn zoning map ordinance.
I'll second that.
So that it presently zoned apartment house Class 2 R4 District and high-rise building R5 District from the Washington Street to Lynn-Saugus Line shall now be designated as General R2 District.
A motion has been made to set down for a public hearing. It has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. The ayes have it. Just for a little housekeeping, we are meeting November 1st, and we were meeting November 29th. Because of various requirements with timing, we'll probably have a very hefty schedule on November 29th. Just telling you that. Okay, anything else? Councilor Capano.
On November 22nd, that is the day, the last day for the RFP process. The RFP process will be completed for marijuana dispensaries.
Right. That is a question for the Medical Marijuana King of Lynn, Attorney Lamanna.
Correct. The responses are due honor before November 22nd. ISD will look to determine whether the individual applicants have answered all the questions. If they were, they have, then they've been deemed responsive. The RFP calls for some presentations here at the 29th meeting, and I would leave it up to council president and the council, any limits that they would want to have on that presentation time limit or whatnot, but that's what the RFP calls for. Deadline's the 22nd, presentations the 29th.
Okay, and...
Yes, Councilman.
So, when, when all the RFPs are in, will the council know who has put in, or will there would be a determination made by someone else as to the best ones, you know, or we know all of them, you know, that, that are, that are coming in?
They will all be submitted to you on the 29th. My understanding, the exception would be as if an applicant just ignored certain questions, so they would be deemed unresponsive. If they're asked to, how are you going to mitigate any problems with the community, and they just skip that answer, inspectional services would deem it unresponsive and would kick them out as not meeting the basic requirements of what the RFP stated. But I envision, hopefully everyone will answer the questions, and may the best man or woman or company win.
Could we, could we, could we get a list of the people, or the, the people that put in RFPs that don't get picked for whatever reason? Maybe they didn't fill the application out, so we know who wasn't picked, you know, also?
Absolutely. Then there would be a rejection letter explaining it.
The reason why, and the reason why they weren't picked.
Oh, absolutely. That would be provided to the council and to the applicant, explaining why that they were deemed unresponsive. And I don't expect it to be. Most, most times, serious applicants fill out every question, but if you don't put together an application, there's no sense for them to have a presentation.
My intention here isn't to keep people here longer than necessary.
No, no, no. Ask questions.
So, there could be 15, 20 RFPs, you know, from what I'm hearing, there could be quite a few. So, so what will happen? We'll, we're not going to look at that, at them that night and make any sort of decision, I don't think, I hope.
There is a schedule put into the RFP process, I believe, that either have to the end of the year or to, to middle of January. I forget, but there is a period of time either, it's over a month for the, and I think I may have put January just because of the holidays. And then after that period, assuming one or two are selected, there is a time limit for the mayor to negotiate a host agreement and send that host agreement back here for the council's approval. But there is a window, there is a section in the RFP that the city reserves the exclusive right to extend any of these windows, so if there needs to be a greater window, a month, month and a half is too short because of holiday schedule, the council by majority vote can extend that to have additional meetings to digest and to select one, two, or zero.
And where would, when would be the period that the council would have input for locations or suggestions for a host agreement, or, you know, any type of, that, that type of input? You know, when, when would, when would that occur?
The council will know the proposed location, the 22nd, definitely by the 29th at that meeting. Every applicant is required to identify a location where they propose to locate, and so you'll know that information. You'll also see what their proposal is, how to, as far as their experience goes, how they're going to have the building look, security, and at that point, if one or two are selected, it gets sent to the mayor's office, the mayor negotiates a host agreement. If that is done, that host agreement is sent back to the council for review. So you have two review periods. One, you're going to review the RFP and select one or two, perhaps, and that is forwarded to the mayor for her to begin an individual host agreement. And then after that point, you'll have a second review of the host agreement itself to determine if you're satisfied with what, what the mayor has negotiated with the applicant.
And there's no requirement that, that the mayor would take any of the suggestions for the host agreement? You know, if we had something to add to the host agreement, we could make a suggestion, but there's no requirement that the mayor would have to take those?
As I said, this is, this is a partnership. If you, the council feels strongly that a certain provision should be in that host agreement, and the mayor negotiates the host agreement and that provision is not in there for whatever reason, the council reserves the right not to approve the host agreement, and there would be no approved medical marijuana facility submitted to the Department of Public Health for their, for their consideration. So there is a, well, there's not an absolute requirement. If the requirement is something the council feels strongly about, and it's not there, you retain the ability to not approve the host agreement as negotiated, and they may have to...
We would be under the same, it would be the same situation as, as the ordinance, you know, another deadline, and, you know, if the mayor negotiates a host agreement, the council would be under, under the gun to approve it. Otherwise, we would be in trouble for not, not providing a medical marijuana dispensary somewhere in the city. Is that, is that accurate? You know what I'm, you know what I mean?
An unreasonable denial of a submittal and an unreasonable denial of a, of a host agreement can be the subject of a lawsuit. My understanding is Saugus denied a medical marijuana facility. The applicant believes that their proposal was reasonable, and there is an ongoing lawsuit. But that is only if it is a determination that the city was unreasonable, the mayor's host agreement demands were, were unreasonable, or the council's failure to approve that host agreement was unreasonable. You are a very reasonable group of elected men and women, so I don't anticipate any of those issues happening.
No pandering. Yeah, I got the Council Sear has a question first.
Thank you. I have two questions. One of them, he just brought up. So, the only places they can ask to put these dispensaries are in the areas that we've proved already, correct?
The only two areas that it's zoned for are Western Avenue from the Beldenbligh Bridge to Murphy Ave, and the Linway from Market slash Broad Street to the General Edwards Bridge on the, on the southbound side. Those are the only proper, proper, proper locations.
So if somebody brought in a proposal to put it in a different area in the city, we wouldn't even have to hear it, hear it, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and the other question is...
That's one of the requirements of the RFP. They must show compliance with the zone ordinance. If they do not, then they're not, non-responsive. You would see, Councilor Capano, a letter to that effect, that the reason why we've deemed you non-responsive is you didn't meet the criteria of, of being located in a, in an area where it's zoned for.
And before they can even submit their proposal, are they already approved by the state saying that they can obtain a license?
There may be instances of applicants that have been approved in other locations. In all likelihood, there will be some applicants that have not been approved and received final DPH approval. They will be at various stages of the approval process, and that may be something that you want to consider. If gross profits is one of the provisions of the host agreement are their bid, and they have another year or two before they get DPH approval, then the city will receive no percentage of gross profits for a year or two. Other ones that have received that approval, and no one's received approval for the City of Lynn, so no one will have, be able to come in on February 1st, or whenever the date is, if we ever get to that date, and be able to open. They will have to show this location and go to the state. But they will be going through background checks and other parts of the DPH process, and more than likely, that's ongoing as we speak.
All right, so, and this is my final question. So if somebody comes in front of us, can we put down a stipulation that they have to put down a certain amount of money? And if they, they're not able to get approval from the state, that we get to keep that money?
I anticipate some of the responses will, will in fact say, if, if selected, we will pay an upfront money of X amount. And they can get creative and, and what I've seen in other cities, the more creative you, that the responses are, generally have a receptive audience with, with, with the special permit body and this is the special permit body in Lynn, the city council.
Because my point is that if we allow somebody to make a proposal, we listen to it, everybody agrees to it, from the mayor to the city council, we get the location, that takes time, and then they go in front of the state and the state denies them, we just wasted all that time.
If it is not in their response to the RFP, they certainly could be insisted upon by the mayor and, and certainly suggested by the council that after the host agreement is approved by the council, negotiated by the mayor, approved by the council, it has to be signed and the city also sends a letter of either support or non-opposition to the state. That could be a condition that the moment the host agreement is signed and the city sends a letter of support or non-opposition, that a payment could be owed to the city to get some type of upfront money. More upfront money probably would mean a less percentage of the gross, but maybe someone will give us a lot of money upfront and, and a great, a large percentage of the gross. It's up to the applicants to make a determination what the Lin Market is and how to best deal with any issues that may arise.
Thank you.
Counselor Jahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I said, you might have answered it earlier, I might have missed it. Now, what's the deadline for the proposals? Like, when do they have to be invited?
They must be submitted by four o'clock on November 22nd.
Okay. So now, are we all going to have a copy of those to read them before the meeting?
I will, I will talk to, speak with Chuck White, the purchasing agent, what typically done. My conversations with Mr. White, ISD, the bids are due into ISD. ISD should make sure that the bids are responsive and one of the reasons it could be unresponsive is if they're not in the proper zone. Another reason is they didn't answer a question about security proposals. But every, and we will let the council know who we rejected, if any, and the reasons why they were deemed unresponsive. Those that are responsive have been told that they, to be expected to put a presentation on before the council on November 29th meeting and how, how that present, and it's possible there could be other presentations needed in order to answer all your questions. And if there are 20 applicants, you may want to keep that over multiple nights as well. So it, it does dict, is dictated somewhat by the number of applicants and time constraints.
Yeah, I just think it's going to be a lot of reading for us to sit here that night and try to...
And it, and it's, and as I said, it's at least a month and it might be a month and a half already built in for a review period for, in discussion and debate and the RFP specifically states that that can be extended at the mutual decision by the city. So if there are five great proposals and you really want to go through them and debate them out, there could be a longer period of time. But this month, a month and a half period is typically what I've seen in other cities and towns for the, for the council, the appropriate officials to make a determination, at least the, who the best one or two are, if there are.
Thanks, Attorney Lamanna.
Counselor Lapierre.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Lamanna, a couple of questions on the host agreement itself. So after the RFP process ends, what's the timeframe in terms of when the mayor can enter into discussions for the host agreement?
Once the council selects either one or two, zero, there would be no, there'd be no host agreement, but assuming the council selects one or two, the day after that vote, the mayor has a built-in period, I believe, of one month to sit with the, the entities that you folks have selected. Only those entities, not that she may have preferred the third, your third choice. She is, the mayor will be limited to negotiate with the firms you submit to the mayor's office and there's a one-month period. If for some reason they need time, the mayor at a discretion can extend that. But once she negotiates an agreement that she's satisfied with and the, and the applicant's satisfied with, it must come back to this council to make sure that they're satisfied that everything that they feel is important is included in there.
And is there any criteria in how the host committee is forming, in formation? Who gets to be on that host committee?
The host agreement would be negotiated solely with the mayor and the applicant. There will be some promises and, and representations that will be in this RFP that they cannot back off on. The host agreement, is the city's opportunity and here the mayor's opportunity to obtain additional benefits, additional services to the city over and above what was included in the actual RFP submitted on the 22nd.
So, but is it, so it seems to be it's limited in scope between the mayor and the provider, the potential provider, right? So can that grow from that point? Can it be a limit or a maximum amount of participants in that process or it's strictly legally the mayor and the recipient?
From a, from a legal standpoint, the mayor could bring in a team to negotiate. She could bring in someone from the law department, someone from the police department, certainly she could include one or more counselors to be part of that. I've had discussions with the mayor where she's spoken about a committee made up of elected appointed officials, including members of the city council, to the extent that they want to be part of that process. But that was at a time before the RFP was set aside, but there's no legal impediment to have, have other parts of the team. But the original RFP that was submitted...
So then, when it does come out for a vote on the host agreement, this council at least has had some representation at the meeting level, you know, to do the investigatory work with the, with the RFP applicant.
I may be sort of married to that and not certainly be, I'd be glad to speak to the mayor about that. Would delay everything if the council had something in mind that they truly believed should be in that host agreement and the mayor was unaware of that and negotiated the host agreement without that specific provision, only to have it rejected and sent back for further negotiation. So I think it's in the city's best interest for everybody to know what is important to be in that host agreement and what a deal break is and what a not deal break is.
Final, final question for me is how many, ultimately, how many votes does it take from the council to approve the host agreement? Six or eight?
Six, majority.
Six.
Majority vote. Thank you. Six for the selection.
Counselor Capano.
Yes, so normally, when there's a business that, you know, wants to set up shop in somebody's ward, the counselors will talk to the business owner and, you know, check them out, do some due diligence as much as possible, you know, make a judgment on whether it's appropriate or whether we should or shouldn't. So as of right now, we've been advised not to speak to any of the applicants during the RFP process, right? So after the RFP process, however, we will be able to, because I, I mean, here's the thing, the mayor may or may not, you know, invite certain people, it's not going to be every counselor in this, you know, committee. I mean, the way this whole thing was determined, was determined, you know, behind closed doors somewhere where, you know, they determined that two places in Ward six would be the best place to put a marijuana dispensary.
Five places in Ward six, we reduced it on your recommendation to two.
So I just want to make sure that this whole process doesn't end up the same way. So I want to have the ability to talk to each and every single one of these people that put in, whether they filled out the application correctly or not, before they locate in my ward and then be able to have discussions with the attorney, other counselors, and anyone else that I think is appropriate to be consulted. Because I'm not, I don't want to rely on, you know, a certain few people making these decisions like happened when the ordinance was first drafted and put in the paper and I first read about it. So, you know, I just want to make sure that doesn't happen again. Because I, I, I know, I'm not under any illusions that once this is draft, the, the, the dispensary is picked, the people are picked and the host agreement is agreed to, I, I don't think there's a chance in hell that whatever we suggest that this council is going to be added to the host agreement. That's just my own personal opinion. So I think any input that we can give, and if I speak to them and they're, a lot of them are calling now, I'm going to take input from all the counselors and, and try to do whatever I can upfront because once it gets up there, I don't think anything is going to change. That's just, you know, where I'm coming from. So I just want to make sure after the RFP process happens that we are under no, under any obligation to stay away from them. We'll be able to talk with them and, and like we normally do with any other business.
I would recommend that you invite every applicant here and ask as many questions as this council can think of, the property owners, and get as much information as you can right here in the public, in, public view.
I, I hope there's 20 applicants and I think we have lots of questions for all 20 of them. No matter how long it takes, I think we should make sure we do this correctly.
I agree. Attorney Lamanna, what's the date that you would suggest that Counselor Capano and all the other counselors can begin to communicate with applicants?
I would limit the conversations to this, to these hearings. That would be my recommendation.
That's a recommendation. What's the date upon which counselors here can go talk to applicants?
November 29th, you will know who the applicants, who the applicants are.
Well, we'll know the 22nd, right?
22nd.
And then 29th, people will be able to come back and they'll be able to do a presentation. So arguably, the 22nd, that, that, that list would be made public. We would know and the public would know who are applicants, who are not applicants. Their applications would already be set. I don't see any conflict that would allow Counselor Capano or any counselors to contact those folks and say, who are you? What do you do? I mean, there's going to be a presentation in the public. It takes six votes, as long as not more than a quorum at any time is talking or meeting with an applicant and there's no serial communications, I would argue that there's no problem with folks communicating out to people. I mean, you can do whatever you want. I am going to wait for the public hearing because that's, you know, I'm a belt and suspenders guy, but I don't think there's any problem for Counselor Capano to be doing that. What's your opinion on that? Yes?
The law department will look into that and advise. This is not your, your, this is not similar to a special permit application for a business on the Linway. This is an application process where party A is trying to beat party B and communications with party A and not speaking to party B could be perceived as, as an issue. So the law department will reach out to that and speak with the inspector general's office and advise you accordingly, but, and we do have time and I promise you'll have a decision well in advance of the bid openings.
And just to, just one more point. If, so hypothetically, if somehow there was a ill-conceived communication, at one point, at one point, two people start to, to conflict themselves out of the process. You should, you also, you should also advise the counselors of that as well. Just in case people don't know, maybe there's some, some processes or things you do accidentally that would then bounce you out of the decision-making process. We definitely don't want that, or maybe we do. Counselor Capano.
Yes. One thing I just want to avoid is something that has happened, you know, over the years and happens all the time now, where some decision is made at, you know, at, at the city level and the way you find out about it is you read it in the paper. All right? So I can just picture with us having no communication like we normally do with any other business and then, you know, all of a sudden picking up the paper one day and finding out that there's been a marijuana dispensary communicating with either the mayor's office or someone else here, and I just don't want to find out about that in the paper. If I had the trust that things would be open, I would have no problem with it, but we don't have a history here. We have a history of the complete opposite over the last couple of years. I find, if I didn't get the Lynn item, I wouldn't know what's going on half the time. So I, I just don't want that to happen in this situation. And the only way I can guarantee that won't happen again is if I have communication with the business that wants to move into the ward. Because I, you can't tell me that no one else is going to talk to them. I just don't believe that. I want to be one of the ones talking to them. And I think any other council should have that opportunity now.
So I, so I would take that in the form of a motion to direct the law department to put together an opinion on the proper way to go about every city council and mayor and public employee as to how to formally communicate with any potential applicant post whatever day you pick, the 22nd or 29th.
That will be decided with consultation with the state as well. To protect the process, which I know we want to make sure the process is, integrity of the process is, is done right.
And just so we're all clear, I am very certain that the applicants themselves, who invest a lot of money in these things, do not also want to disqualify themselves to the process. Will probably find some folks that are professionals and deal with other communities and probably would know more about the process than us that would advise us, we can't talk or we shouldn't or this is appropriate and that's not appropriate. Counselor Lapierre.
Just for the record here, during this RFP, RFP process, this is in which the time where there should be no communications and we should not know who any of the applicants are. Is that correct?
There'd be no discussions. All this, the RFP states all questions should be, should be sent to myself and the, in the law department. There'd be no, no discussions.
That closes on November 22nd, is what you're saying?
Correct. That's the opinion of the law department, absolutely no discussions in any manner other than to refer, if you bump into someone, refer them to the law department if they have any questions. We will issue an opinion on what is appropriate post November 22nd, post bid opening and while the council is deliberating whether it's a month, a month and a half or however long that is, what outside communications can occur.
All right. So the motion is made for the order and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. If you, just one last moment, one last item under new business. As we all know, and we should know out there in TV land, that we have early voting here now in the City of Lynn. I would like to, I was honored to be able to accept a silver medal on behalf of the City of Lynn for recognition of the good work that the Madam Clerk, Mary Oddly, and her team have done to bring early voting here to the City of Lynn. It was a group that consisted of Massachusetts Common Cause, the ACLU, MIRA, MassPurg, Massachusetts Voter Table, MassVote, League of Women Voters, and Progressive Massachusetts that bestowed these certificates upon certain communities and I was honored to be there for the City of Lynn. And here I am today. Oh, they're going to put that on TV for a moment. If you'd like to go back to the live shot of, there we go. There we go. Wait, maybe a little of that. It's a silver, there we go, silver medal, City of Lynn. And I'd like to formally on behalf of those groups, honor our clerk, Mary Oddly, with this very much deserved certificate. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if you'd like to tell us how things are going with early voting, I think folks would be very excited to hear the numbers.
Things are going wonderful. Yesterday, we had a total of 389 voters come to City Hall during the regular City Hall hours. Today, we had a total between the City Hall regular hours and the Lynn Museum from 10 to 2:00, we had 693. So we're up to 1082 right now for voters. On top of that, we have 1,300 absentee ballots. So it looks like it's going to be pretty quiet on November 8th. It's going well.
And we'll have, continue to have early voting?
Regular City Hall hours for the next two weeks. We actually have hours Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 in City Hall. And we also have the museum tomorrow and Thursday, 10 to 2:00. And next week, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, 10 to 2:00.
Early vote. Okay. Anything else?
Just real quick about...
Seeing nothing else?
Nothing to do with that.
Counselor Kaluchi.
Before you caught me, everything.
Counselor Kaluchi.
I'm still adjourned.
All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Motion, we are adjourned.
I want to be promised to delegate your authority to others that have more wisdom and know...